All the town council meeting of October 4th, 2010 to order, please rise and join me in the saying of the pledge of allegiance. Council Brian, would you please lead us?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence. I'm afraid I have some very bad news which I just found out about John Dolfrid, who had served on the Heritage Commission, passed away on Friday. So please remain standing for a moment of silence for him, as well as our men and women serving us both here and abroad. Thank you. May be seated.
[inaudible]
Begin with public comment. Before we go to our scheduled interviews, I'd like to recognize Councilor Tom Dolan, who has to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to mention, I had a couple of concerns about what we're about to do, and I wanted to raise them. The thoughts I have are around this whole process of volunteering for the community. It's a terrific resource that we have. I would consider it the backbone of our community is its volunteer workforce. It's a terrific resource. It saves us a tremendous amount of money. One easy example that was done a few years back, I'm not sure how current this is now, but when we looked at ourselves versus dairy and our recreation commission, towns are similar in size. Dairy's a little bit bigger, but the rec. commission operates at 10 times less the expense than the dairy commission does. And it has to do with the terrific network of volunteers that we have that serve our rec. programs and serve on our rec. commission. When we ask our volunteers to give up their family time without any compensation, they ask very little in return. Maybe an occasional thank you, but most of them are humble and just want to serve their community. I think, though, that when we enter into the process that we may enter in tonight, where we're going to subject some of our volunteers to be re-interviewed after they've already been vetted for conflicts of interest, the only thing I could, when I thought through this process, the only thing I could think of that we would glean out of these second set of interviews with people who are already serving on boards is a sense of political alignment. We already explained to them about the time commitment, and they've served on these boards, so they know the time commitment. They've already been vetted for conflicts of interest by prior town council. So the only thing left is, what are your politics? How do you feel about, what's your political view on this particular kind of development or this particular policy? Now, God forbid, we would ever have to consider the issue of a potential volunteer holding a sign at a political rally that we either, for a candidate that we either may support or not support, or a volunteer that may have actually run against us on a ballot and competed against us, and have to consider that as part of this reappointment process. But let's put that aside for a minute and say that's not, that may be a perception, but maybe not the reality. But the fact is that we are in this second round of vetting, looking for political alignment, and that's, is a very powerful thing, and it's something that I have a problem with, mainly because the charter specifically prohibits it. And the charter is our set of laws and rules that we must abide by as a town council. Now, the charter in its current form, with the exception of a few revisions, was written about 14 years ago. And I'll bring your attention to Section 8.12 of the charter. Let me paraphrase. "No person shall be appointed to or removed from, or in any way favored or discriminated against with respect to any town position or appointed town office," and I'll paraphrase here, "because of political opinions." So I think that although we're not going to remove somebody from office, I don't think, tonight, and we're looking at whether we're going to appoint or not reappoint, I think that we walk close to the line, but I don't think we're going to cross that line. I don't think we have a charter violation, but I think we're walking close to the edge here. Because I think that we have to be very cautious, and I would ask my fellow councilors to be cautious, that we don't cross over that line and make a decision of reappointment based on a candidate's political views. So although we're about to enter into a process which the charter recommends that we not do, or at least in some form not do, we are ignoring another section of the charter, and bring your attention to Section 9.5, which says that we must, at least annually, meet with every chairman or chairwoman of all the town committees to review significant actions taken by the committees, projects currently under discussion, and anticipated activity for the coming year. That's something that we are not doing, and we haven't done for years. It's in our charter. We're supposed to be doing it. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to make a motion, but I'm going to ask the council to consider a thought, that rather than spend the time re-interviewing already-appointed volunteers, which, under the title of 8.12 prohibition, which, in other words, this is prohibited by the charter, rather than spending time doing something that is prohibited by the charter, we should spend our time, and this time devoted on our agenda, to do something the charter requires, that we're in violation of or that we're not doing. And that is interview the chairman of our town committees, and we have one tonight. Art Rug is here. He's one of the members who is about to be re-interviewed. And I have to say, I mean no disrespect to anybody sitting up here, but to interview Art Rug, who served many years as a town selectman, and I don't know, a decade and a half on the planning board, and the leader of several community committees, to interview him to see if he's worthy to be reappointed to the planning board is just plain silly. And we shouldn't do it, and I recommend we don't do it. We spend our time with Mr. Rug tonight as a chairman of the planning board, asking him what the charter asks us to do, and that is to interview him as a chairman and ask him about the plans for the planning board for the rest of the year, and any projects that the planning board's currently having that he can help make us more aware of. So, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we avoid the activity that we were planning to conduct tonight, based on my view or my reading, and again, it is my reading, of Charter prohibition 8.12, and instead move forward with the Section 9.5 under committee review, which is an activity that we should be doing, that we haven't done for years, as mandated by the charter. Thank you.
Okay. Do any other councilors have any comments?
I would support that. I can also remember that it was about four years ago, I think, as a chairman, we were interviewed, so it's been at least four years from my recollection. So I'd be interested in hearing what they have to say.
Well, I'll say something. I don't disagree with you, Tom, especially on the second part. If it's something the charter says we should be doing, we should be doing that. But I also believe that the charter says that the town council is responsible for appointing people to these positions to serve a certain term. And my understanding is, is that the terms are not open-ended. They expire after, I think, most of them is typically three years, at least for land use boards, they're typically three years. So I don't, I agree with you. If the line of questioning started to get political, then that would definitely be a charter violation. I don't think anybody, I know all of you well, I don't think anybody up here is going to resort to that. A future town council perhaps could, but I know, as Chair, I wouldn't allow that to go that way. But I still think we are the ones who are elected by the people of Londonderry to serve, and part of our responsibility is to appoint people to these boards. So I think we owe it to the people to, when a person's term is expired, to at least talk to that person again. Maybe there's something's changed in their status since the last time we appointed them that now would warrant a conflict of interest, and maybe this would be a time for that to come to light. Maybe it would warrant that they don't get reappointed, maybe it won't. But at least it would be brought out in the open at this point. So I respect what you said, but I respectfully disagree with not continuing with these interviews. I think we owe it to the people who elected us to do it, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you may.
If I may, up until two, maybe three years ago, what would happen at the board levels, and this is specifically, we only interview at the land use board levels, it was done by the boards, the recommendation was made by the chairman, and they vetted their candidates and sent them to us. It was changed a couple of years ago, for really no apparent reason. Okay? Some of us understand why some people wanted to make that change. I believe Tom's comments are warranted. I will have no questions for any of these incumbents, so that's where I stand. So I'm sorry, but I disagree.
Sean, did you have something to say?
I just think it's funny that there's so much, so much to be made about, questions about what we're going to say. What is it that we're afraid of saying? Is there something that I'm aware of? Is that what we're doing tonight? Going back to an old playbook? We don't want to interview these people? Afraid of something that might come out? Something that might have been discussed? Is that what we're doing?
Are you addressing me?
I'm just saying it out loud.
Address to the Chair, please.
Please, please, nothing.
No, we're in public comment right now. Sean, you should address the Chair. So, do you have any other comments before I proceed with our?
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay. All right.
Am I not a member of the board?
Well, I looked over and I didn't see you.
Okay, I'm sorry. We voted at our last meeting by consensus to do this. And while we all have agreements to disagree with votes at certain times, typically, the board moves on. Tom's taking a different approach to a vote that he was not in favor of. And I think at our last meeting, we all expressed the, three of us who voted expressed the reasons for why. Tom hasn't talked to me about what my questions are going to be. They're apolitical. It's not a violation of any section of the charter. Using the English language, I can read it. So I'm ready to move forward with the vote that we took in public session, three to two, and that's the way this board works.
With that, our first interview will be for Lynn Wiles, who is an incumbent to the planning board. So Lynn, would you please come forward? Have a seat, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Wiles. My address is 46 Bartley Hill Road.
And you are looking to be reappointed to the planning board. Your current term ends on the end of this year.
End of the year. That's correct.
So questions from the council? Council Brian?
Sure. Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate you coming in. So you're at the end of a three-year term?
Correct.
Okay. One of the questions that I have relates to recent developments. As you know, being a member of the planning board, there's some pretty significant things that come before you, and, you know, you do the best you can in terms of trying to reflect your views as an individual member of the community, as well as the views of the board from a consensus standpoint, as well as policy matters, et cetera. So I'm going to talk about the Woodmont situation. Were you able to attend any of those sessions or watch a couple on cable? Because I know there was a lot of replays. I just want to get a sense for how much you heard or saw from?
Sure, I did go to two of the sessions, Mike.
Okay. Question has to do with the Heritage Commission. At the first session, I specifically asked a question of the designer, Andre, after he kind of presented his vision of what the commercial buildings were going to look like. And in hearing him talk, I got the impression that the design was kind of already put forward with the vision they had. And I wanted to do a friendly reminder that we have a design review process in town, which incorporates the Heritage Commission, whose responsibility is specifically designed to look at commercial projects from the standpoint of heritage and culture and all those things that are important, I think, to the most of the people who live here. The reaction I got from Andre was disconcerting in that he made a derogatory comment about the Heritage Commission not doing a good job so far, and kind of dismissed me. So I confirmed with Tim that our design review process for Woodmont, when it comes before the planning board, and it may come before you at some point in the next three years, that we still indeed will have the Heritage Commission look at commercial projects. They'll give advisory recommendations of the planning board. So my question to you is, over your last three years as a planning board member, what's your view of the Heritage Commission's recommendations? And how do you individually incorporate those into your decision as one member of this board? And then lastly, how do you feel about that type of comment that he made?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Point of order.
Yes.
We are asking questions of someone who is going to be appointed on something that has not been presented in front of the board, has not been presented to the Heritage Commission, has not been presented to the planning board, has not gone through design review. We're asking him to state what his opinion is and how he may or may look at a project that has not come to this community. I don't believe that that's proper.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to be censored. That is a fair question to ask of this applicant.
He has to vote.
I'm talking to the chairman.
And I'm speaking to him also. Thank you.
John, I didn't know you were Chair.
He's addressing me. Mike, I know where your questions are coming from, but it is something that hasn't been brought before them yet, and I don't think it would be...
Let me rephrase, Mr. Chairman. I see how this is going to go. Let me rephrase. Okay. What's your views on the Heritage Commission's role in the planning board process?
I appreciate what they do for the planning board. They go through a lot of the preliminary work. They look at the designs, the architectural designs. I think they do a fine job trying to assimilate the design work into their view of the town of Londonderry.
Okay.
And if I can say a few things, too, about your other questions.
You may not be able to. Someone may press you down.
Hold on.
Just to give you my opinion, just to let you know, some of the things I've been looking at, you know, I heard some of the comments that Andre made there, and I understand, you know, I certainly got the tone of his voice as well, that, you know, he thought he was the king of design, which is fine. But I was down in Huntsville, Alabama, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and there's a development that he designed down there called Providence. And so I took a drive over to see what it was like. And the design there, I thought he did a nice job of assimilating it into what I would view a southern design to be. So he may do a southern design in New Hampshire, I'm not sure. But I think he overall, his intent is to come up with something that's going to look like a traditional New England town. I think he's got one goal in mind, and that's to make some money. And I think the way you make money is to give people something they want to buy. And so I think with that said, that that's probably what he'll present to the board. That's what I would expect him to present to the board.
Thank you, Lynn. Do you have any questions?
No, I can see how this is going to go.
My only question to you, well, first of all, thank you for your service for the last three years, and it's probably longer than that, because I believe you were an alternate for a few years while I was on the board. Has anything changed in your status since we last talked to you, or since you last were appointed, that would, could, probably could possibly cause a conflict of interest?
Nope, just three years older.
Okay, it's three years old. And that's all I really, that's all I really had to ask you. And I thank you again for your willingness to step up and serve another term.
Appreciate that.
We do appreciate it. Any other questions?
Just Lynn's been great servant with you the last five years.
It's been fun, John. But sometimes.
Usually.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Dana Coons, who is an incumbent, and I believe Dana is an alternate and is seeking to be reappointed for another three-year term as an alternate. Is that correct?
Dana Coons, to Asman Circle.
Thank you, Dana. So just to confirm your status, you're currently serving as an alternate on the planning board. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I know personally, I served with you many years ago on the planning board, and you had left and you came back. So you obviously have long experience there. And we just recently appointed you, so it seems, you know, like we just talked to you. But my question to you is the same. Do you have anything that would have changed since the last time we talked to you that would potentially cause a conflict of interest?
Nope.
And I, too, would like to thank you for your willingness to do this for another three years, and we sure do appreciate it. Any other questions from the council? Mike?
Yeah, same question, Dana. Just your view, you've been a long-term member of the planning board, and I served with you for a couple of years. Just your individual view as one member on the role the Heritage Commission plays, and how you view the recommendations they give you on commercial projects.
For the most part, I find their recommendations acceptable. I don't always agree with them. But that's human nature. But overall, I think they do a fine job.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Um, no.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dana, and thank you once again for your willingness to step up for another term. Okay, and the third member of the planning board is Chris Davies. Chris, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Chris Davies, 29 Perkins Road. Currently a full member on the board, and I think I'm only two years older than, since the last time. I'm currently serving out John's, the end of John's term, I believe, that expires at the end of this year.
Okay. Thank you for your willingness to do this for another three years. I know I, when you became an alternate, you were, I was on the planning board, I think as secretary at the time, so I do appreciate that. And same question to you. Is there anything that's changed since the last time you were appointed that could potentially cause a conflict of interest?
No, just older.
Just older. Any other questions from the council? Mike?
Yeah, the same question, Chris, if you don't mind. I can repeat it if you need me to.
No, no problem. Yeah, I find the information that comes from the Heritage Council to be informative to the committee. As Dana said, you know, it sometimes looks kind of okay. It's, you know, it's an edifice on things, but it does, in general, seem to be in keeping with the character of the town wants. And I think the comment that might have come from that, Charette was possibly directed at, you know, what happened before we started having guidelines enforced, and that, you know, there were developments in town that didn't follow those guidelines and didn't have that characteristic to it. And that's where that may have come from.
I have no idea why it was made.
There was a few, for what it's worth, I'll add my 10 cents, as Lynn did. He managed to take something that on paper looked, and I did attend a couple of the sessions, did look pretty good. And I looked through his materials and, in general, you know, there were some very nice concepts in there, particularly on the grading of the density of the residential units. But he managed to get a lot of hackles up, just from his demeanor. And it was unfortunate, I think, certainly from the sessions I saw. It was more of the delivery rather than the actual materials.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, I have one. Chris, you've been on there for a while. I was going to ask the other two questions to the other two gentlemen. I guess one thing that I would like to know is, in your time on the planning board, do you see the board as a board that considers what the public wants as opposed to what developers want?
I think there's a balance on the board that does, yes. And, you know, there is obviously consideration for both parties. I think something that I learned coming to the board was that, you know, property owners have the right to do what they have the right to do on their property. And it's not for us to say, other than the boundaries of the zoning laws, to say that they cannot do certain things with their properties, and that is core law in New Hampshire. Certainly something that, you know, you get reinforced with coming to the board. But to that matter, you know, whether public comment and feedback has come in there, I mean, the one thing I will say that I've walked away from the board meetings and been pleasantly surprised with, and it comes from John mostly, is the, you know, the request of the parties that might be involved in the development with their abudders to come to some agreement and to just sit down and talk with each other. Because oftentimes, it's because of misunderstandings of what's going to get developed, that anger comes out in the meetings and the misunderstanding from the public. So in general, I think it's a pretty balanced board.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you again, Chris. Appreciate your willingness to serve for another term, and thank you again.
Thank you.
So that was our candidates for the planning board. We also, in the next section, is recently, the town council determined to create an open space task force. And on that board are two at-large positions, so they're essentially citizens who could be appointed to it. We have two people, and I believe one of them couldn't make it tonight. Is that correct? So Mr. McKenny will interview next week. But is Jeff Locke here? Jeff, can you please come up, state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Jeff Locke, 10 Welch Road.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So Jeff, there was an article in the newspaper today that talked about that the population in town has only grown about 500 people. Some of that may be attributed to the amount of open space that has been gained under control by the Conservation Commission, and that there's not as much buildable land. I think Mr. Thompson was quoted as that we build out at something like 35,000. Your point of view, do you think the open space plan that had been running probably from about 1997 up until now, what did you think of that, and where do you think it should go?
Well, first of all, I haven't seen the article that you referred to, so...
I apologize.
Me, too. But it sounds like interesting information for the task and the objective for the task force. So with regard to the open space initiative so far today, I believe it has been meeting its mandate quite well by attempting to protect whatever parcels are available, and negotiating some rather effective easements to prevent development of certain areas. And with regard to the estimates of the build-out for the town, I don't have any reason to disagree with those numbers. As an engineer and an analyst, I tend to be objective. I'll just be looking for factual information or to support the conclusions of the task force.
Thank you.
Good questions.
Any other questions from the council? Tom?
Thanks for volunteering. Do you have any reason or any interest in any open space or parcels that may be considered that would result in any conflict of interest for you or for a member of your family?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yes, thanks for applying, Jeff. Do you have a, it's not a trick question, okay, so I'm gonna ask it. Do you have a personal philosophy or a personal perspective that you can share with us about your view of open space? I'm not sure how long you've lived in town, I don't know you personally, but I'm interested, and I've asked the same question to lots of applicants for land use boards, do you have an open space philosophy of your own? Like it, dislike it?
Well, first of all, I've been living here for nine years now, and my wife and I and my two kids, we currently plan to stay for a very long time, so we have a vested interest in making sure that whatever the task force subjective is, it gets implemented very well for our kids. If I could articulate my philosophy, it would be that it's a delicate balance between the needs for growth and business development and what is clearly an economically viable community and state, but at the same time, families like to feel like it's livable, doesn't change so much that it feels foreign, that it maintains some sense of tradition and stability. So there's a number of competing objectives that need to be negotiated, but I think it's possible.
So it was an okay question?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff.
My only question was, you sort of just answered it, and I was gonna ask it a different way. I was gonna ask you, you know, if you were in Londonderry 20 years from now, where would you like to see it? And you essentially just answered that by answering Council Brown's question. So I don't have any further questions, and I just wanna thank you for your willingness to step up to this task force. It's gonna be very important for the future of Londonderry.
Certainly.
Counselor O'Keefe.
Thanks. Touching on John's question, John had asked a similar question to what I was gonna ask you, but I think that from the council's, well, from one person on the council's purview, the reason why we discussed the task force was to see where we were in the process to go forward, where are we at, what have we accomplished so far, and I think the five of us would probably agree on that, that it's time to review that and to see where it goes from here. Over the last couple of years, we haven't, as a council or as residents, voting, haven't decided to put any money into the open space account. So I guess my question would be, as a new person that's about to be coming into this process, what would be some of the things that you would look to do or to bring to the table to, you know, do things with less money as far as that's concerned? Stewardship, things like that?
That's definitely a fair question. I think that by and large, to all of your comments about other candidates, you know, we are residents and we want to serve our community as well, and I'm no different. With regard to open space, I mean, I believe that there are clearly a number of developers who would like to come in and help the community grow and provide products and services that are in demand. What I would like to do is use my engineering and financial services background in order to help look at some of the assumptions that they have, look at some of the estimates for revenues and growth, try to build a consensus, is it effective, is it accurate? And just in general, try to instill a sense of deliberate fiscal control to make sure that we don't make any assumptions that might ultimately create more problems than we solve.
Thank you, and I appreciate you stepping up, thank you.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we're done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our, the other candidate for the at-large position on the open space task force, Mr. McKenney will be here next week. Our third and final position that we were going to talk to tonight is to interview Art Rugg for the Heritage Commission, which is a reappointment. So, Mr. Rugg, if you would come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Sign in, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Arthur Rugg, and I live at 11 Pine Hollow Drive, and I am reapplying for a position on the Heritage Commission, which I have been a member for, I can't remember, probably 10, 11 years.
Questions?
So, Art, how many years of service do you have in this community?
Good question.
Can you count that high?
I don't have enough fingers. I'd say probably maybe about like 24, 25 years, I'd have to go back and look.
Well, I'd say that's, I'd say it's been a pretty stellar 24 or 25 years for you, so thank you.
Well, it's probably been brought up, you know, that you have to be a contributor to your, you know, community, and I know it goes back generations in my family where I'm originally from, which is a much smaller town than this and much more rural, or it used to be, anyway. And I think one of my hallmarks is trying to maintain at least some essence of ruralism, but I think what we are seeing, you know, this, at least my tenure, is much in a way of growth and more toward urban type of development. And it's just because of the population, people move here, you know, they like to live here, so there's more of us that we have to deal with.
Thank you, Art.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Art, thanks for your continued service to the community, and like I said before, I think it's kinda silly that you're here being re-interviewed for this position based on the service that you have to the community, which probably is more than all five of us combined total.
Well, no, it gives me a chance to think of what I've done, the trouble is time goes by too fast, and it seemed like I just came here, you know, a few years ago, but reality is, it isn't.
When I was paraphrasing the charter earlier, interestingly enough, you were one of the authors of that charter, so rather than spend my time asking you about your qualifications for this position, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions about this process that we find ourselves in the midst of. What was, you only, I suppose, can represent yourself as an original charter member, what was your thinking in writing that paragraph on prohibition, and could you ever, did you envision this process taking place, which was really begun in 2008 by the council in 2008, and this is the third year we've been doing this?
We are in public comment, please, continue.
So I just was curious to know, is this a misread on my part as to the intent of the charter, and was that, when the charter was originally written in the mid-'90s, is this something that, this re-interview process and so forth, was this, I guess, how do you feel about that, being an original charter member?
I'm trying to think back, basically, the ultimate appointing authority is the town council, and it's really the town council's duty to decide on how to do it. The other aspect of it is really, you know, looking at, it's really in the town council's court, but what we talked about is looking at merit and pointing on merit alone and not, you know, with, you know, looking at politics or anything, trying to keep politics out of it. So you'd be pointing on merit and what you've done, your accomplishments, you know, your contributions and so forth. But also, it was designed for the councilors to talk with people, to find people to volunteer also, so that you'd have, just by one-on-one conversations, you know, some knowledge of individuals applying, and that's really within the prerogative of the town council. And really, the whole thing was, you know, for them to develop a consensus on how, really how to do it, but basically, it's in your court, it's not any committee to, you know, to say, we want this person or that person, you know, the suggestions that come forth in various conversations, but that's part of the weighing process that you have to do.
In your opinion, and in your discussions with others who are going through this process of being interviewed for a reappointment, do you think that this process that we've adopted here will encourage more people to volunteer, less people to volunteer, or have little or no impact?
Well, I think people volunteer because they really want to contribute, and I think they would do it anyway, but I think some people feel as, I think it's, because some of the feedback I've gotten is being unappreciated as a volunteer, that the service is not being recognized, where it should be recognized from, you know, the course of, let's say, a three-year term, whether it's been, you know, positive or negative, have been problems. And the expectation would be is that that would have been sorted out within the town council through individual discussions, but, you know, again, it's really, the call is really with the town council.
Thank you for your service, Art.
You're welcome. It's kind of like a labor of love, and it's challenging, that's what I love about it, it's challenging and it's dealing with people and trying to, trying to work, you know, really what you want to do is work with them, that's where your input comes, that's where the ideas come, that's where your strengths come from, is listening to people.
Counsel Brown?
Yeah, Art, the same question I asked originally, I didn't think we were gonna interview you. At the start of this meeting, we were told you weren't gonna be interviewed, and it was a clerical mistake, but I guess something changed between then and now.
I was gonna be here anyway, so I told Margot, I says, you know, it's fine.
I'm surprised you came up to be interviewed, based on what I was told earlier. Anyways, thank you for doing it.
Among many of life's challenges, I've had many interviews in my life.
Well, I don't want this to be an onerous thing that you're going through tonight. So, Heritage Commission, you've been on it a long time, this is to be, you know, chair, you're on the planning board a long time, same question, your view, given your experience, your roles on those two boards, your vision and your perspective on the role of the Heritage Commission, and whether that's, how important that is to you as an individual member of this nine-member board, the planning board as well as the Heritage Commission, in terms of the site plan review process for commercial buildings?
I think the planning board does listen, and actually, by statute, a member of Heritage Commission can, or maybe a member of the planning board, and that connection is probably really, really good, but I think the Heritage Commission really gets into the nuts and bolts of the design and really what is Londonderry, what's the Londonderry look and so forth, which I know my earlier tenure on the Heritage Commission is kind of what we put together as part of the site plan, and we have design review regulations now, which is Section 3.12, and it kind of takes, you know, the whole concept of looking at and boils it down to legislation, that, you know, Tim has done a good job, and sometimes I like to look at that and put it back into what, into, let's say, a couple hundred words of what describes Londonderry. But we've had our, you know, our battles with various developers that come in with something that is, in my opinion, rather alien to, you know, the typical colonial New England look, and the last round we had is with McDonald's, which is coming before the planning board this coming Wednesday night, and they had a very corporate style, which is quite a bit different from what they have existing right now. And what has resulted is kind of a blend, but more, you know, still with the colonial aspects about it, so it doesn't look like it's designed for, you know, Greenville, South Carolina or something. And we've been written up and editorialized in the union leader with Taco Bell as Taco Hell, you know, the union leader editorialized, who are we trying to tell them how to design the buildings? But we do have input, and what you see now is really a compromise, is one of four meetings.
How do you feel the Heritage Commission has done overall in the course of the time that you've served on both these boards?
I think, I think good, you know, I wish we could excel more and be, you know, I'd like to be more demanding, but there's a compromise, and really, working with developers, you try to find out, you know, what they really can do and what they really can't do, and that's kind of what we do is, and usually the first thing we tell them is, take a look at the town, take a look at what's next door, that's kind of what we want, and they take a look at our design regs, and then come back and talk to us.
So you do have projects that, as a Heritage Commission member and a planning board member, that you can direct developers to, so that they get a sense of what the community probably is looking for?
Exactly.
You have examples we can direct them to.
Yeah, 'cause like with McDonald's, we directed them to the existing structure, why change it?
Yeah. Right.
I remember the argument. Why they need to change it, but yes, I guess they're going through a whole corporate change and everything.
So there are examples of good projects that went through the Heritage Commission process?
Yes, Hanifeld's another one. When that first came in, it looked like an airplane hangar, and...
Home Depot.
Yeah, yeah, told them, look, another one is Home Depot, which we're gonna see again Wednesday night, because I understand they want some more outside storage, which is in front of the building. And I know John was on the planning board at the time, I think Dana was also, myself, we took a year on that too, and John kept getting photos of Home Depots other places across the country, because the nature of his work, he travels quite a bit, and when they were showing these photos, they go, oh, well, they had to go back to corporate to talk about it, come back next month and make a few more changes, that they have to go back to corporate again, come back, talk to us. So it's funny what you see there, the only thing that has Home Depot colors is the signage, everything else is non-Home Depot. So, I mean, we tend to want to work with a developer, and I think they're willing, we know the ones that are willing to work with us, and we know what they can expect for design.
Okay, thank you.
So we push it too. Not that we want to drive them out, but we've been accused of driving people out of town, so there's a, there's a balance has to be achieved.
Also, Mike? John?
Just one quick question, Art, I'm gonna hold you up here. So, if I'm hearing what you're saying, you see the Heritage Commission as, not as an impediment, but as more of an advisory board to the planning board, and then the planning board making sure that the recommendations of the Heritage Commission are followed?
Yes, yes, that's pretty much it, 'cause it gives, I mean, the planning board doesn't really have the time to delve into the details of the architecture stuff and everything where the Heritage Commission does, they can pull it apart and...
So out of curiosity, Art, just one more, I'm sorry, out of curiosity, in recent memory, can you remember, or in any memory, can you remember the Heritage Commission recommending one thing and the planning board doing another?
I really can't recall. I'll say no, but I have to go back and look, I got a lot of notes on this too, but I think, I think for the most part, the planning board has agreed with the Heritage Commission.
So they've been good partners?
Yes, I'd say, there's a good relationship between the planning board and the Heritage Commission.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Art, just two quick questions, and first, you know, you've been the chair of both these boards for as long as I can remember, and I had the pleasure of serving under you as chair of both these boards, and in some way, you've helped me do this job a little bit better, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
You're welcome.
You strike me as being one of the, excellent chairman, you run meetings very smoothly, and hopefully, I'm doing a better job up here because of that.
I think a part of my function is to teach people also, you know, it's, I don't know everything, I'm willing to listen, I might always agree, and I might grumble about it, and all of a sudden, oh, yeah, you know, but it's a thinking process, but also to impart knowledge to other people, and that's really what we want to do on committees and boards, is especially planning board, you want, you know, the institutional knowledge is really crucial, you need to have that there, but also, at the same time, you want to bring in new members so that they're learning how we do things, because this is a lot of complexity, especially this day and age, and the statutes, there's changes there, the biggest one that we've seen is the workforce housing that really has caused us, you know, difficulties that we, I think, we've managed to work through, I mean, we survive anyway. And also, you know, a lot of land use is case law, and keeping up with that, really involves a lot of reading, 'cause there's things you'd like to do, but you look at your own regs and you say, oh gee, how can we do that? So some of us inventing ways around it so that we can do it, but I think we've built more flexibility into our witnesses now than what we've had before.
The first question I had is kind of expanding on one John asked you, since you've been in the unique position of being the chair of both of these boards, do you ever anticipate a situation where there might be a conflict because you have to chair the Heritage Commission, which then makes a recommendation to the planning board of which you chair as well? I can't think of any myself, but just...
No, I really can't think, because they kind of work and they kind of complement each other, and... In fact, that's why our, our site plan regs, design review regs are designed so they basically complement. So what the, the Heritage Commission will complement the planning board, it'll impart information to the planning board that it, that it needs.
It kind of feeds into it as a recommendation, as opposed to something that's binding.
Yes.
And then my last question is just what I asked the other members. Do you see anything that has changed since you were last appointed to this position that could potentially cause a conflict?
Nope, I've had the same employer for the last, I'm in biotech, so same employer for the last six years, which is a long time in the biotech world. So I've had a good number of employers, all biotech, so it's unrelated to this stuff. It's another world from here, believe me.
Okay.
But this is fun stuff. It's, land use is constantly challenging.
So if, if there's no other questions, I just wanted to thank you once again for your willingness to do this for another term, and as always, you've been a great inspiration to me personally, so thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions on the board?
Thank you, Art.
Okay, thank you. We're always looking for volunteers, so...
So anybody on TV?
Step up.
Heritage Commission have up to five alternates, so...
Really? So we have openings on there?
Yes, and I got very sad news today, which you announced earlier, that member of the Heritage Commission, John Dolford, passed away on Friday. So we're gonna, you know, you'll have to be moving an alternate up, and that will be one alternate, and...
A big loss, Art, on the Heritage Commission, unfortunately.
Because John was also working with David Kogleger and myself on legislation to look at reducing tax impacts on historical houses, properties. So it'd be a big loss there, and also historical society-wise. John was a big part of the rebuilding of the Morrison House, so he'd definitely be, be missed.
And we lost Ginny, that was a big loss, and now we've lost both of them.
Yep. Kind of a shock, so I'm not quite...
I'm still in shock, only because I found out three minutes before we called the baby daughter, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Art.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are, that was, that concludes the, the interviews for this evening. We're still in public comment, so if any other members of the public have anything they'd like to say, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us what's on your mind.
Representative Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road. Reason I'm here tonight is basically I'm here for the elders of fear thing on the housing. But sitting in the back here, I was kind of surprised on what's going on. I can feel the love in the room. We have a charter. It's there for a reason. And I'm kind of shocked, whereas one counselor wants to ask questions, and because there's another one that's vetted and don't like those questioning or wherever, that he stopped. We elect him, just like each and every one of you. I'm hoping in the future that that counselor has the right to ask that question and get the answer that he wants. Okay? I was kind of shocked there, standing in the back there. But my concern is on this charter. Every two years at the State House, we, we vet the Secretary of State. He gets re-interviewed every two years. We interview the clerk, we interview different other peoples within, because the new legislative vet him. You know, we vote on him to be back in there. And I want to thank you for standing up for the charter, because it is in there. But of course, anything that's in the charter, if there's a conflict with law, then the charter is not the end result. It's not the Bible. It is, it is the law of the, of the land here. But I, I'm just hoping that somehow, if a, a counselor got a question, Jesus, I, I was interested to see, listen what was going on, and then you shut them down, and then other counselors now get intimidated, whatever went on, didn't want to even ask the questions. And it's a shame to be elected official, to be put in that position, like what I've seen here this evening. So I'm hoping somehow, and of course, if the charter wants to change, change the charter, there's a petition process, you know that. But I just wanted, just standing in the room, bring that up, and it's a shame. But thank you for letting me go on.
Any other members of the public have anything they'd like to say? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us what's on your mind.
Glenn Douglas, Six Overlook Ave. I'm not sure what I'm going to say, actually. Woodmont seems to be the question no one wants to ask. When I sat through all of the public, I think I made all of them, they said that Woodmont was not the first charrette, it was the second charrette. The first charrette was held, quote, "three months ago" with state and local officials. Seven months ago, I asked the town council about the meeting that was held with the Woodmont developers. The response was, "A town counselor attended. We don't know when the meeting was." I've asked other people, and I've been told it's tire-kicking. I don't particularly think elected or appointed officials should be kicking tires with potentially the largest developer in Londonderry. No one wants to answer the question. I've been told by numerous people to go talk to Dave, and Dave has told me that no one from town staff attended the meeting. That's why we have town staff, so if a developer wants to come in and find out what's going on, he can ask, what can we do, what can't we do? Elected and appointed officials make policy, and change policy, and rewrite policy. So if no one wants to answer the question, it wasn't three months ago, it was at least six months ago. Woodmont is a huge turn from the look and feel, from what I've seen. Mr. Wiles said, I think it was presentation, but the guy certainly didn't make a good presentation. He constantly demeaned the residents, the, the way America does things in general at one point. But there's all kind of politics up here. No one wants to answer the question. That's it. So now that Woodmont is going to be an official project, I don't expect that we're going to have these type of meetings anymore. If we are, I expect that it's going to come up in a liaison report, and going to say so-and-so met with so-and-so, and this is what was discussed. Because that meeting back then wasn't in the liaison report. It was never mentioned. It was just, it happened. So, and as far as the politics going on, I tell everyone, you've got to come to the meeting to see what's going on, because if you can see what that red light doesn't catch, it's pretty darn embarrassing when you're sitting in the back of the room. The faces, the smirks, the smears, you know, I mean, come on. Woodmont is huge. There's going to be a ton of people talking about it. You guys got to get your act together and figure out what you're going to do or not do. Because it's going to be big, big in town. That's all I have to say.
Counsel O'Keefe.
I'd just like to address Mr. Douglas's comment about the meetings that may or may not have happened. I can tell you that I was not there. End quote.
Any other members of the public have anything they wish to say? Okay. Our next order of business is a public hearing. I need a motion to go into public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we enter a public hearing. The purpose of hearing the public on a change to our zoning ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Can I read?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative, and we are in public hearing. One order of, on the, on the agenda is ordinance 2010-05. Counsel O'Keefe, would you please read the ordinance?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. Introduced on September 20th of this year, public hearings tonight. Ordinance number 2010-05 is an amendment to the zoning ordinance to revise the number of units allowed in a residential multi-unit structure and amend the phasing ordinance, which adjusts the number of units allowed per phase based on the revisions to the number of residential multi-units per structure. Whereas the town council requested the planning board to review the allowable number of units in a multi-unit residential structure, and whereas the planning board and staff reviewed various alternatives in concert with the community's master plan, community input, and existing land use regulations. Whereas the planning board has recommended that the town council act favorably upon this request. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Londonderry that sections 1.3, 2.3, is that a two? Yep, 2, 2.3, 3, and 3.6 of the town zoning ordinance be amended to reflect the new limits in units per residential structure. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I believe it was already moved to a public hearing last week, but...
Oh, okay.
Do we have to, Dave, are we supposed to second it, move it again in a second?
Public hearing is open, just take action after.
Okay, I would draw that.
Okay. Tim, do you have any presentation prior to our comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Just to briefly go over the background and process that's gotten us to this point. As you recall, back in February, you requested the planning board look at reducing the number of multifamily units per building at the time the workforce housing was adopted back in February. The planning board spent several months examining the implications of that change. Our legal counsel advised at the beginning of the process that the requirement had to be consistent across the board for any ordinance that allows for multifamily structures. Because multifamily is allowed in R3 inclusionary housing and the elderly housing section of the ordinance, all of these sections had to be treated accordingly. The planning board process, after the council had requested back in March, the board reviewed the legal counsel advice to examine the cost impacts of that number of unit change related to the workforce housing law. In May, they reviewed our staff findings on the cost impacts and made a determination that the impact of that change would not be deemed significant, and directed staff to draft the ordinance revisions. In June, we held a public hearing on a proposed change to go from 24 units per building to 16 units per building. The hearing was tabled after concerns were raised about the impact of that to elderly housing projects across town. In July, staff then presented various other options to the board on how they could redraft the ordinance. The option chosen in July was a 16-unit maximum per building with a conditional use permit process to allow for a slight increase. In August, the workshop was held with the planning board with the proposed revisions, again, that being 16 units per building with a conditional use permit requirement to allow up to a maximum of 20 units per building when strict criteria are met. The board then directed staff to move to a public hearing, which took place in September, and was recommended here to the council. Briefly going over the changes for our R3 district, which is, is our existing multifamily district, it would be to revise, to state the maximum number of dwelling units per dwelling shall be 16, and adding a subsection that says that the maximum number of units may be increased from 16 to 20 if the applicant is granted a conditional use permit in accordance with Section 2324. The current R3 district does not currently have a conditional use permit section, so this is a new section, 2324. The first parts of that are procedural items that mimic other portions of our ordinance, but because this section did not have conditional use permit language, it's repeated so that the board is, has its proper procedure set up. The actual language that would deal with the R3 district, there are five criteria that would need to be met in order to increase from 16 to not more than 20, that being that the proposed use is consistent with the objectives and characteristics of the district, that the application is in the public interest, that the property is reasonably suited for the larger buildings requested, and the design of the site represents, to the extent practicable, preservation of natural resources, open spaces, does not create a hazard to surface or underground and water resources. The applicant has to demonstrate that the 20-unit buildings for which the permit is sought does not impact the health, safety, and general welfare of the town, and is otherwise in conformance of the law of ordinances and regulations as applied to the project. And then lastly, that there exist on the property limitations, being steep slopes, wetlands, conservation overlay district areas, flood hazard areas, or other natural constraints that reduce the buildable area to the parcel such that it's limited to not less than 60% of the permitted density that is otherwise allowed in the ordinance at 16 units per building, and that calculation would need to be demonstrated to the planning board by a licensed professional engineer and other related professionals. Similarly, in our workforce housing, our inclusionary housing section for multifamily, the language would be identical, maximum number of units per building at 16 with a conditional use permit. There are already a significant amount of conditional use permit criteria in our workforce housing ordinance. In order to do multifamily in general, you already have to obtain a conditional use permit. So we've created two additional standards, so that if you want to increase from 16 to not more than 20, there are two additional criteria. The first is similar to the R3 district, however, you'd have to demonstrate that it's limited to less than 50% of the permitted density at 16 units. Again, the planning board felt that it was appropriate to set this at a more strict level for inclusionary housing, because there is an increase in density from eight units to 10 units per acre allowed in inclusionary versus the R3, and they felt that there was a reasonable compromise to make this a little bit more stringent standard in the inclusionary section, especially given that it's more likely that these are going to be in areas that are predominantly in single-family residential nature. The second criteria is that the applicant has to demonstrate to the board that the limitation of the number of units at 16 makes the overall project unfeasible, such that the development costs would exceed the ability of the developer to recoup their rent, sales, and any applicable tax credit subsidies. The applicant has to demonstrate to this board through an independent cost analysis, which includes the cost of the land, development and construction cost, financing, profit, sales costs, and other factors. So in essence, in order to get this conditional use permit for a workforce housing project, you would have to show that at 16 units, you could not make any money, and you in fact lose money on the project. In the elderly housing section, there is currently no cap, and again, based on legal counsel advice, we had to make this consistent because it allows multifamily structures. So we'd establish a cap at 16 units, again, allow for a conditional use permit to not more than 20. In terms of the conditional use permit language for this section, we've basically created a new subsection, because we already have a section for conditional use permits for affordable elderly housing. So the new conditional use permit would be the following four items. Again, similar, that's the meeting the public need or convenience, that it's in the public interest. The third criteria is that the owner of record shall enter an agreement with Rockingham County Regis, filed with the County Registry of Deeds, certifying the project to be utilized and restricted to 100% elderly occupants, either 55-plus or 62-plus, depending on the nature of the project. And similar to the other two, the, again, we'd be looking at a density reduction that such that 60% of the permitted density would be allowed with the 16-unit per building requirement. This also then triggers some changes to our phasing ordinance. Currently, in our R3 district, with 24 units per building, you're allowed two multifamily buildings of 48 units per year. With this revision, you would be allowed three multi-unit buildings. The number of units would remain the same at 48 per year from the date of final approval. And adding a new subsection that if the planning board does grant a conditional use permit, those projects would be allowed two multifamily dwellings, dwelling units not to exceed 40 units per year from the final date of approval. Likewise, for the inclusionary multifamily, it's essentially the same language, that we'd be going from two to three buildings, but the overall number of units would remain the same at 48 per year. And again, for those that are granted a conditional use permit, they would be allowed two multifamily buildings, a total of 40 units per year from the date of final approval. There are no changes needed for elderly housing phasing in this particular circumstance, because there's a specific exemption from phasing in the situation where those projects are restricted to 100% elderly occupants. So in this case, we did not need to make any changes to the phasing ordinance for elderly housing. I believe that this represents a compromised position from the original request to go to 16 units, and took into account the feedback that we heard loud and clear from the member of the Elder Affairs Committee regarding their proposed project that they're looking to do on Sanborn Road. So we, the planning board believes that this is an appropriate compromise that meets the intent of the request that the council put before them, and we hope that you act favorable on it tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Questions from the council?
Tim?
Yes.
Do we have any workforce housing projects coming to town anytime soon?
We do have a conceptual discussion coming up a week from Wednesday night. Neighbor Works of Greater Manchester is interested in looking at the Widmore Estates project located on Mammoth Road. That was approved as an 83-unit elderly housing development that, as you may know, has been sitting stagnant with only one building constructed. I believe there's only one unit that's actually sold within that development. They are going to be coming to the planning board to discuss with the board a possible conversion of that project into a workforce project. They're looking at doing eight-unit buildings for multifamily buildings in that particular project. So the board will be getting their first look at that next week.
And this ordinance now applies now that it's been posted, right?
Yes.
Are there any, are there any projects that are sitting in design review that were before this one?
As, as you bring that up, the, the project on Stonehenge Road, the Joe de Carolis project that has been sitting in design review, they renewed their design review application back in April, prior to the posting of this ordinance, and they are still allowed to continue under the 24-unit-per-building requirement from the previous ordinance.
Thank you, Tim.
Sure.
Tim, thanks for you and for the planning board going back through this again. It looks like you guys tightened it up as best you could. It looks like you guys tightened it up as best you could.
Yes.
So that's appreciated. One question that I had was looking through this on Section 1.3, 3.4.
Yep.
It said, "For, for single-family development approved under the requirements of inclusionary housing, Section 2.3.3, 25 dwelling units per year from the date of final approval." Is that, that's not per building, that's per year?
That's for, that's if the project is being done as a single-family development on individual lots, they'd be allowed 25 single-family units per year.
Okay, all right. And like I said, I know this workforce housing thing's been a real...
Challenge.
Challenge, yeah, to say the least. But it looks like you guys did the absolute best you could with it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Tom?
Mr. Chairman, Tim, question, you went, you went, you touched on it, but it was a little too fast for my uptake. The density of units per acre, could you address how this change affects that?
It makes no change the number of units per acre that are allowed in each of the zones. Currently, you're allowed 10 units per acre for a multifamily inclusionary project. That is still the same. The only change is the number of units per building is being dropped from 24 down to 16. Reason being, the council, back at the time this was adopted in February, was concerned that because most of these inclusionary multifamily projects are likely to be located in AR-1 zoning districts where you're near existing single-family developments, they were concerned that the scale of 24-unit buildings would overwhelm predominantly single-family neighborhoods. So the intent of this ordinance is the scale of the buildings, not the density of the project.
So conceivably, you, if you could take these 16-unit buildings and stuff them in a little closer to each other, you could still get the same number of units per acre at the conclusion of the project.
It would just be in 16-unit buildings maximum rather than 24-unit buildings maximum.
Did I hear, when listening to the process, was there some concern from developers that this would make their projects more expensive, or is...
It was actually staff concern. The reason staff raised the concern is the workforce housing law is very clear that your ordinances and regulations can't have the effect of making it unfeasible from a financial perspective. So one of the exercises we went through and we worked with a nonprofit developer was looking at what their costs would be on a 24-unit building project versus a 16-unit per building project. And roughly, it came out to about, I think it was a neighborhood of 7% to 10% difference in the costs. The planning board had to then make a determination based on the legal counsel advice as to whether they deemed that to be significant. They deemed that it was not, and that's why we moved forward with the ordinance.
So, so if you're, if you're a prospective buyer, let's say you're an elderly buyer, and you're looking at the cost per unit with this change, because we, because if the cost of the project goes up, we could expect that the cost per unit would go up, or the cost per the prospective buyer would go up.
That was the staff concern.
So, so now we can safely say that we don't think that this...
The, the legal counsel's advice was, as long as the board determined that it was not significant cost difference, that he would feel comfortable defending that if we were challenged.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Brown, any questions?
Yeah, several. Tim, you, you touched on it as a bullet point, but I'm not sure if I heard the, the reasoning behind it. For the phasing changes, it's pretty straightforward in that it used to be two buildings and 48, so two larger-scale buildings with a total of 48 per year, and now it'll be three buildings of a smaller scale but still be 48.
Correct.
Okay, but then the, the two new sections for the conditional use permit folks, so folks come in and say 16's not doable, we want 20, their phasing now goes from three buildings and a total of 48 to two and a total of 40.
Correct.
Just the thinking behind that.
The, the planning board...
I'm in favor of that, but I didn't hear the thinking.
The planning board wanted to try to keep the number of units as consistent as possible throughout the phasing requirements.
Yeah.
And if we had left it at three buildings per year, it would have put it out of whack, and it wouldn't have been rationally related to the 48 that's allowed. So they were concerned that if we did three buildings per year under both scenarios, there would be too many units per year being allowed under the, in a conditional use permit process. So they opted to reduce that by eight.
Got it.
They felt that was more consistent with the 48 we'd allow in a standard situation.
Okay. Question on the conditional use permit criteria in one section, the first, it's 2324.
Yes.
There's five distinct criteria.
Yes.
And then in, under affordable elderly, there's a variant of that, there's only four, and two of the ones that are in the previous one are now gone. Why are we not consistent between each one of those? That, I don't understand that.
You're talking about the, the inclusionary or the R3?
Uh, so let's, I'm looking at your red, the red only, so 23244.
Okay, that's the R3 district.
Okay, so let's just use that as an example. For R3, there's those five distinct criteria.
Reason being is right now, there are no conditional use permit criteria of any kind in our R3 districts. We needed to establish those, basically the first three are the preamble to pretty much every conditional use permit that we have in our ordinance. Because we didn't have them in that section, that's why they appear there. We already have those in both the inclusionary and the elderly section, so they did not need to be repeated. They're already existing language.
So that's one of the things I'm saying, is that the third one you see, 232443?
Yep.
Doesn't appear in the elderly affordable, and neither does 444. I don't know if that's a typo, an administrative thing, or it was by design that those two were removed from elderly affordable.
That was by design. They wanted to make sure that there was the, it was the balancing act of making sure they are reasonably consistent across the three districts in terms of what the criteria are, but they wanted to be more stringent in the R3 and inclusionary than they were with the elderly.
Why? That, to me, seems to be inconsistent, and that concerns me.
And I think the, the general consensus of the board was is that generally speaking, the elderly projects, we have a history with those, they've been relatively successful, those that have been constructed, with the exception of Whittamore Estates, they didn't want to tinker as much with that as they did, obviously, with the R3 and the inclusionary housing.
Any problems with that?
Not from the review of council.
Okay, all right, that's good enough for me. And then the last question is more of a data point about the conceptual that's coming in for workforce housing, and I can look it up, but I'd rather just have you answer it. Do we allow conversions of previously approved elderly?
We do, but they're likely not going to go that route because that particular lot where Whittamore Estates is located would meet the conditional use permit criteria for a standard, starting-from-scratch project. In all likelihood, they would probably abandon the original project and start anew.
So that, it's allowed in the ordinance we approved?
It is allowed. If they meet the conditional use permit criteria for a standard inclusionary housing project, they would be allowed to follow those standards.
All right. That's it for me.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll go to the public. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Calling here on 369 Mammoth Road, would the 16 density apply to planned use development?
Planned unit development?
Or whatever, yeah, planned unit development, PUD.
No. The planned unit development would go through a master planning process with the planning board, and those regulations would be set up as part of that master plan for the project.
So they would have all new regulations?
That's, the, the intent of a PUD is that the master plan would replace the zoning for that particular area, and that the planning board would then develop what those requirements would be for that specific project.
So if people have any questions, they better go to the planning board meetings. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Sure.
Can the PUD say it's only eight units?
Yes. If that's what's agreed to as part of the master plan, that's what would be, that would be what governs.
But the PUD can also turn around and say it's 24 units?
As long as you don't exceed six units per gross acre of the tract, that's the maximum allowed. But in terms of phasing and the number of units per building, those are all part that can be negotiated, part of the PUD.
Okay, so it's negotiated means the planning board has to agree to it?
Yes.
And the developer?
Yes.
Otherwise, there is no agreement.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
So you guess?
Another quick follow-up.
Sure.
John answered some of what I wanted to ask. So are you saying that under the PUD, there is no phasing and there is no GMO at the start?
That the GMO would still apply in terms of the overall number of, the permit cap for the town, but phasing would be part of the development of the PUD master plan.
Okay. That's very important. Okay.
Sure.
This was to touch on what John was talking about. So with the planning board, would they, would it be safe to say that they would also be using this as a guidance tool or anything really that would go in there?
My assumption would be is, is that, you know, we haven't, so sitting on the planning board's 10, 11 years, I would look, I personally would look at what are rules today, and what are they proposing, and how does it vary? That'd be the first question that, you know, I'd ask of Tim is, okay, what's different? If everything they do falls within our current guidelines, then you would think that you'd probably get a pretty good negotiation. First thing I want to know is what's outside our current guidelines? That'd be the first question I'd want to know. I mean, is that, does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. I expect that that'll be the subject of multiple workshop meetings before we even get to a public hearing on any PUD.
I would suspect whenever a PUD comes to the planning board, that it will be a, I mean, Home Depot took two years. I would think they're going to vet this process pretty heavy. I mean, and no one on the planning board knows exactly what it is. The only, candidly, the only person who knows exactly what's in that ordinance is the guy who wrote it, and he's going to have to guide us through it. So we're going to have to lean on him pretty hard.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Last question on this.
Okay.
So when the designer publicly stated they're going to do 60 a year, he was assuming something.
Yes.
I just want that out on the record. There was an assumption made.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions before I go to the public again? Okay.
Al Baldassaro, 41 Hall Road, I am the vice chair of the Elder Affairs Committee. On this project here, and hoping that this gets approved here tonight so we can move forward, the designer took that land that was given to the town, I think you all may be aware of, there was 13 acres of the land that was given to the elders for this project there, because this is a HUD project. The engineers of, can only fit three buildings in that area, five to six acres of buildable lot, and then with setbacks and everything else that go with this. This is the reason why. And then, of course, hopefully soon, they're going to be coming to the planning board because they, they've got to go to the HUD to submit their paperwork. But my question is on, is there a definition of elderly in your ordinance? Because, and the reason why I'm asking this, because this is for 62 and older, and I know that, and I think we could be opening up a can down the road of 55 and over.
Affordable elderly housing is required to be 62-plus.
62, that's the answer I want, okay, that's, but otherwise, I'm hoping, you know, we can get this approved and move on, and, and then the, the developer or the nonprofits, hopefully, they're going to come forward soon because they have to get the grant into, you know, churned in.
Just, just, I want to make a point as, as chair, we're not voting on elderly housing development.
Right, I know that, you're voting on the inclusion.
Voting on an ordinance, a change to our, our ordinance.
Right, the inclusionary, right, which is, to me, is, deals with the elderly.
Change the density and allow, change in the density based on a condition.
Number of units.
Just want to make that clear.
I just say elderly because I'm...
No, but I just want to make it clear because I've gotten phone calls from people.
I have.
There's people who think, who thought we were voting on a project tonight. We are not voting on a project tonight. We wouldn't vote on the project anyway, we'd go to the planning board.
Right, this is the ordinance. That's why I'm here for the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? See none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any further, oh, sorry. Name and address again, please.
Art Rug, planning board chair. This probably, the whole workforce housing has probably been, I think about a two-year process, and...
About 20.
I mean, it's been very, it has seemed longer. But, you know, I think we've well-vetted this, this whole process, and I just want to thank our, our staff, Andre, Tim, Dave, the council, and especially members of the public that came forth with their ideas and everything, that I think we have something that works for, for all of us, and I think the overriding concern the planning board had was ending up in court with us, or the remedy for it would be court, and they have a judge deciding on your whole planning of this thing, you just take the town planning board out of it. But I think, I just really want to note the work that Tim has done on it, especially this legislation and the work that he did with our, you know, town attorney. There's a lot of work there to get this, to have a degree of consistency, but also to recognize that like elderly housing is different from, you know, really workforce housing. There's a lot, a lot of work that's been done by Tim, and I want to have that recognized. I'm very appreciative of the work that, that he's done, and I want to thank everyone for putting their, putting their part into this also.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the council? Tom?
I just had one additional comment. This is for Mr. Baldassaro that had a question. I'll just to refer you to the right paragraph because that would answer your question. 3.6.5.2.1.3 says, when discussing conditional use permits, it says, "The owner of record shall enter an agreement to be filed in the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds certifying that the project will be utilized and restricted to 100% elderly occupants, either 55-plus or 62-plus, depending on whether the project is standard elderly housing, that's 55-plus, or affordable elderly housing, which is 62-plus." So it's, the language is in there, and the age restriction is in there as well.
Okay. Okay, so seeing no other comments, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative, and it passes 5-0.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Thank you to the staff and the planning board and the public for your input into this. And if you could pass this down. Okay.
Want me to read that?
I need a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to come out of public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative, and we are out of public hearing. Old business, there is none. New business, our first order of new business is New Hampshire Department of Transportation presentation on Exit 5 and South Road projects. Jim?
One more minute so they can set it up.
Sure. We're going to go on to the next item while you guys are setting up, because it should be fairly quick. Order 2010-17, can I have someone to read, please?
Sure. I'll volunteer. Order 2010-17, an order relative to expenditure of maintenance trust funds for various projects, breeding and adoption, will be tonight, 10:04, 2010. Whereas voters since 2003 have approved funding for the maintenance and repair of public buildings and grounds in the town, and whereas expenditures have been made by various projects, specifically, number one, a new pump and electrical repairs at recreational facilities at a cost of $3,849.84. Number two, electrical and flagpole repairs at Leach Library at a cost of $765. Number three, HVAC repairs at the police department at a cost of $9,337. Number four, septic repairs at the highway, at the highway garage at a cost of $719. Number five, painting at the senior center at a cost of $1,800. And number six, rehabilitation of the bandstand at the town common at a cost of $20,750. Now therefore be ordered by the town council of the town of Landery that the town treasurer is hereby ordered to expend $37,220.84 for the aforementioned repairs and improvements. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. I have a second, I think John beat Mike. All right, any discussion?
Or put Mike on.
Or questions for the...
I have, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Question for you, Dave. As we look at these expenditures, and I understand some of the stress we put on our maintenance trust account, given some of the things we've done the past couple of years to creatively try to save taxes, could some of these expenditures be redirected out of impact fees and some of the different categories? For example, the pump and electrical pairs at rec facilities, could we take that out of the rec impact fees? Flagpole at the Leach Library, could we take it out of the library impact fee? I mean...
Historically, the impact fees have been reserved for either paying for new improvement, debt service on new improvements, or to save money for future new improvements or additions or acquisitions. The maintenance trust is designed to pay for repairs, which all of these different expenses qualify within that definition.
I, I understand the historic nature, but what I'm thinking is, we've, we've, have put our maintenance trust funds under some amount of stress, I think recently, last couple of years, and our impact fee balances may be under less stress, and I'm, I'm just, I
And I'm just, I certainly don't want to do something that's inappropriate, but could we be, at least in the short time, be a little more, could we, could we extend some of that creativity with our, with our management of our trust funds to the management of our impact fees in a couple of these cases?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Tom. Unfortunately, with the lack of building activity, our impact fees are on the greatest stress than a maintenance trust fund.
Really?
We're just not receiving a lot of revenues in any of the categories across the board.
Okay. I didn't realize that.
And we have our impact fees for police and fire dedicated for contributions toward debt service in the FY-12 budget, which we have enough funds to make those payments. However, if the lack of impact fees continues through to next year, we'll have to reduce that contribution, because the balance just won't be available to us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dave, just regarding the rehabilitation of the bandstand, so what was the scope of the work, I mean, just at a high level?
Yeah, there was a new roof painting, new handrails, staining the ramp, painting the floor, repairing rod of wood throughout the structure.
Okay.
Was there quite a bit?
There was enough. It was, it was time to invest some resources in that town, that town facility. So now it should hopefully last for quite some time, if we have to reinvest significant dollars.
That's good, that's, you know, at the center of our, of our town, so. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative, and Order two thousand and ten dash seventeen passes five-zero. If you could pass that down, please. Okay, going back to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation and, yes.
Good evening, my name is Pete Stamnis, I'm the I-93 Project Manager for the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. I have also with me this evening Dan Primo, who is the department's lead reviewer for the highway design effort. We really want to be here tonight to present our plans for future projects in the near future here in the Londonary area, two of which you mentioned, is the interchange improvements at Exit Five, along with the South Road mitigation and culvert improvement project. Those two projects are planned for advertisement for construction beginning in December, and construction will begin in spring of two thousand, this next spring, two thousand and eleven. The Exit Five interchange improvement project is approximately forty-eight million dollars worth of work. The project will complete the interchange itself. We've had three previous projects, and this is the, one of the last ones in line in the Exit Five area. It's approximately two miles of northbound and southbound mainline work, and will relocate the northbound off-ramp. So we did three previous ramps in projects, this will construct the fourth of the northbound off-ramp that wasn't included in the previous project. There'll be four bridges that'll be replaced as part of this project, two over New Hampshire twenty-eight, and two over the rec trail, again, both mainline bridges. There is around three-quarters of a mile of New Hampshire twenty-eight that'll be reconstructed from Perkins Road to one thousand feet south of Liberty, and there'll be a new signalized intersection at Liberty Drive. The work will take approximately three-plus, three-plus seasons, will be substantially complete in the summer of two thousand and fourteen. The South Road mitigation project, project will construct two mitigation sites near South Road, includes work to replace the existing town-owned culvert on South Road, and do some roadway approach work to that culvert. This work will be completed, the town culvert work and the South Roads work will be completed without town funds, it'll be all state funds as part of the mitigation effort.
Can I ask you a quick question in regards to that? Are you guys going to be bringing up the height of the road?
That'll be a little bit of a great change. And we'll get into some more of the details. We did bring some basic plans, and Dan can get into the details of that, and the overall planned construction effort and the timing of that and such.
Sir, I'm sorry, are you going to be touching Auburn Road at all, the intersection of Auburn Road?
Yes.
Many, many years, many, many people come in and ask about that, so if you could get into a little bit of detail on that, that'd be great.
Yep, we'll do that as we get up to the plans and go through the planned work effort, and we'll make sure that we get those questions answered.
Thank you.
With that, I'll turn it over to Dan Primo, and he'll go through a little more detail on the Exit Five improvement work, and then move on to the South Road work also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This plan is a layout of the Exit Five.
Just hold for a second, can you, ask you to use the microphone as you're talking, only because the people at home will not be able to hear you? Is that what you're going to say? Okay, thank you.
This plan that we have up here is the Exit Five improvements plan. And as Pete noted, it reconstructs, it reconstructs Exit Five, and I'd like to touch a little bit about the, the way this plan is laid out. North is heading to Manchester, is in this direction. South, Route twenty-eight, going towards Dairy, and then up here going towards Manchester. And this is the abandoned railroad recreational trail. The, and as far as the coloration goes, the yellow signifies pavement, proposed pavement, brown is proposed shoulders, the greens are, the lighter green is slope work, some of the darker greens are just grassed areas in the interchange area. Blue is water, red's buildings, gray's existing pavement. Just to orient, just to refresh a little bit, Pete mentioned previous projects. The Exit Five Park and Ride was, was one of those previous projects in this location, which reconstructed part of twenty-eight further up at the intersection of Sims Drive. We also had a bus maintenance facility project that went on at the same time, more or less. And then the earlier ramps contract that just finished earlier this spring was reconstructed the southbound off-ramp, southbound, or northbound on-ramp, and the south, and southbound on-ramp. Regards to this contract, again, approximately two miles of I-93 mainline reconstruction, and mostly the, the design addresses our, our public hearing layout of ultimate build, four-lane construction work, although we are proposing this, this initial, initial opening of this project for the mainline, having three travel lanes. And in the bridge area, these are the bridges here, there's two bridges over twenty-eight and two bridges over the rec trail, and in the bridge area, we're going to end up with the full width paved, meaning we'll have the wider shoulders, as can be seen with the, in brown. And then for the, for the remainder of the area, we're going to have just our typical section, twelve-foot travel lanes and ten-foot shoulders, three-lane section, and then transition down to the, at each end to the two-lane, the existing two-lane, two-lane configuration. Several of these, these, these bigger.
Question?
Yep.
I'm sorry, you said there's going to be a two-lane configuration, could you talk a little bit about how you're doing this two-lane configuration, and what's going to happen when, when and if the funding ever comes for Exits three through six, for the I-93 widening? Is this being built with that in mind? Is it, you know, is this going to be ripped apart and redone?
Certainly not. The, all the projects will work coordinated together, they're being advanced, the design is being advanced altogether, so that they'll be able to be constructed with the same four-lane footprint, and, and the three lanes will be carried through for the corridor, through the entire corridor. So, so this is all part of the planned construction, and the phasing of the construction effort will accommodate this, this reduction of the two lanes.
Okay.
With that.
Yeah, I think it answers my question, yeah, you're planning for it.
Yes.
You know, you've got to ask these questions.
Just to continue a little bit, the, the, these, these areas of darker green are water treatment areas to meet our commitments for stormwater. So we have several of these detention areas shown throughout, again, to, to address our commitments. Route twenty-eight now, moving on there, again, we're going to be matching into the Park and Ride project near Sims Drive with our, with our improvements, and finishing that, tying into that. Widening Route twenty-eight for the most part, five-lane section, under the bridges, we're widening to, there's going to be six lanes, two travel lanes in each direction, and a left-turn lane to get onto the, the on-ramps. The layout of the bridges, however, under twenty-eight was, was laid out for consideration for a future eight-lane section. In other words, we can add, there's, there's enough room, the bridges are, have enough of a span width to, to add an additional left-turn lane in each direction, at some point in the future, if needed. And then continuing down through twenty-eight here, again, five-lane section through the Liberty Drive intersection, this area, this will now be a singleized intersection, and then the cross-section of twenty-eight then widens, or narrows back up to the existing two-lane condition. When everything's said and done, the singleized intersections, these, these singleized intersections will all be coordinated, the ramp intersections, the Sims Drive intersection, and the Liberty Drive intersection. Again, the darker green signifies a raised, a raised island, so, and then the orange in the middle signifies just a painted island, so there will be a raised island in, throughout, except for between Auburn Road and Liberty, for the most part, is going to remain a painted island at this point in time. At some point in the future, should, should traffic conditions at Auburn Road become an issue, then the ultimate plan would be to, to extend the raised island all the way through from, from the northbound ramps all the way through to the Liberty Drive intersection. What that means is that traffic wanting to go left out of Auburn Road would have to go through Independence, out to Liberty Drive, to the singleized intersection there.
Excuse me. I'm sure, I've sat on the planning board for a number of years, the chairman of the planning board is here, we have traffic problems at Auburn Road already, if you listen to the citizens that live in that area, they talk about that they take their life into their hands trying to come in and out of that road. I don't know how to fix it, you know, I'm assuming you guys probably do, so, Yannis, I mean, can, am I speaking correctly here? I mean, maybe we can shed some light on this a little bit?
Yes, you do, and during our original presentation, several, you know, when our first phase was constructed and presented, we brought it up to, you know, that, that intersection is a failed intersection, and something has to be done with it. What state chose to do is at this time, because the original plan called for raised island all the way to Liberty, and they decided to break that island at Auburn Road, and if the conditions warranted that, there has to be raised again, they left the configuration that they can build that island and close that intersection to the left turn. But they want to see and see in practice if that's, if that's the case. That is one of the biggest concern from us about that intersection with this.
What's your opinion? Should it be closed or not?
I wish they would close. That's what originally, but that, at this point, state decided to continue that island only up to the, the raised island, only up to Auburn, thinking that they will see what's happening, and, because the slightly different configuration was at Auburn and Independence. They realigned Independence with Varane's Way, that now that intersection and that road can have both-way traffic, allowing the traffic to go from Auburn to Liberty. And the hope is that people see the backup between the Varane's Way and Rockingham Road will take left to the lights at Liberty. But again, when you see this backup, you will have to go somewhere, you will go left. Hopefully, people will be going only west and north on Auburn. I don't know if that's pretty much correct what I'm stating, or, yeah, if there's something more to say.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, probably for the last five or six years, a group of people, every time we have anything that goes on over in that area, comes into the planning board, and, and they describe these very hazardous conditions. You know, I'm sure Yannis has been involved, others have been involved. I know you guys have got to do what you got to do. I would just ask that, you know, and if the other councils are in favor, I would ask that you would consider, you know, Yannis's opinion on what to do, if you guys are okay with that.
I am. I think that Auburn Road's been in failure for quite a while, and it's, with the, given the volume of traffic that comes through there, it's just very, very hazardous for someone to try to dart out and take a left coming out of there. It absolutely should be a, a no. That's just my opinion, but for as many years as I've known, we've seen escalating concerns from residents about traffic hazards there, and, you know, I think Yannis's opinion's pretty valued with this, and, you know, we pay him a good amount of money to make sure that we do the right thing.
Yeah, and my only, as long as the people on Auburn Road coming south from, you know, the bypass have a way to go south on twenty-eight, it looks like they can make a left and then come out at a light at Liberty, that'll be fine. But I think it would, it would be, strongly, strongly recommend that if there's a way to correct that, at this point, you should do it.
We, we, we expect that the majority of the traffic traveling south on Auburn Road would take a left, and, and go to the, the do signal at the intersection to make a left turn, signalize control to head south on, on twenty-eight. They won't need to stay and wait for, you know, an opening during high-volume periods of time at Auburn Road to make that left-hand turn. I think it's going to improve the situation tremendously over what you have today. And we took a number of comments, I guess, over the, over the years about maintaining turning movements at Auburn Road, left-turn lane, left turns coming southbound on, on twenty-eight onto Auburn Road, and, as well as, that, that was really the main turning movement that, that we wanted to keep open, based on some of the comments that we've received. And it's clear that, to us anyways, that if we provide a signalized intersection and, at, to the south, so that people can, can make that left-hand turn onto twenty-eight under, under a signal control, that, that would be the chosen, that would be the most chosen route for, for traffic to take that left-hand turn. So they're not going to, I guess, our, our opinion is that, at least in the interim, that we, we, we see how this is, this works, and then if it continues to be a problem, that we, we would consider closing that, 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 extending that, that raised median and eliminating that left-hand turn, and also left-hand turns in and left-hand turns out of Auburn Road.
I guess what we're saying is, is that we think it's going to be a problem right from day one, so, Mike.
Okay. Respectfully, I don't want to overstep my bounds, other than I'm, I'm a resident and taxpayer here, but to me, if you guys leave it the way it is, it's still going to encourage bad behavior. And unless you take it away, they're still going to do it. And what's the purpose of putting in a left-hand turning, a signal light? It just, you're leaving them an alternative to do it, when I think if you get rid of the alternative, it forces the issue, and they'll, they'll behave. That's all I'm saying. And the fact that you guys are taking all the time to redesign and do everything, it just makes sense to just follow through and save it.
Okay, I can, I'll take that back, and we'll strongly consider.
That's all we could ask.
That's all we could ask, and I appreciate you listening.
Tom.
I had a question, not about Auburn Road, but on the other side of the intersection, on the, on the west side, coming to the, to the south, exit on the south side, exiting to Route twenty-eight.
Yep.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, on the other side of the highway, on the west side?
On the south side, yep.
Coming down the highway, coming south down the highway and getting off, that was a very dangerous exit ramp, as you probably remember, the cars would queue up into the traffic lane. And we seem to have fixed that now with that very long now exit ramp, which allows the, the traffic to accumulate there. But I am seeing, or have observed, that that exit ramp is, at times, is also full. I haven't seen it going out into the traffic lane like it used to, but it's still pretty full. So I guess the thought, my thought, or my question is, with that part of Route twenty-eight under, I would say, pending development, in the next five to ten years, I think we're going to see some retail in there, and be a considerable draw for, for traffic, especially at peak hours. Would, would we be looking to the state to have to come back and readdress that exit ramp to accommodate that additional traffic, or is that something we would look to the developer to come in and modify the exit ramp to accommodate the traffic? How's that?
That's a good question. The, the plans to add that additional left-hand turn lane within the median would be a consideration for the developer?
Well, I'm not looking at the left-turn lane, I'm, I'm on the other side of the highway now, away from Auburn Road.
Pete, coming down here, south off-ramp.
Right, the south off-ramp.
You're backing up quite a bit. Yeah, and what I'm concerned with, with the future development, will that ramp could also back up farther north again? And if, in the future development, will they have to, as an upside improvement, they will have to cover the bill due to the any widening or any modification.
Dan, maybe you can explain the lane configuration under the improved.
Yeah, and, you know, we do have a long ramp now, but it's not being used to its capacity, meaning that once we make the improvements to 28 and add another through lane in east direction to get traffic through the interchange area, then, you know, a resultant of that is these coordinated traffic signals will need less green time, meaning that they will operate, they will move traffic faster and more efficiently. And the off-ramp, for instance, here has a double right. This, you know, this project will add, will reconstruct the end of these ramps approaching 28. And one of the things for the off-ramp specifically is, is we're going to have a double left turn at the end of the ramp. So, operationally, our layout is designed for 2025 traffic numbers. So, our traffic numbers are projected to a design year of 2025 and assume growth rates and whatnot appropriate for this area. So, what you're seeing today is not what you're going to see, I guess, once we make the rest of these improvements.
Okay, yeah, because I mistakenly made the assumption that what was there now was the improvement. So, it sounds like you're going to do a lot more.
That's correct.
Like, right now, the right-turn lane is a stop, a single-lane stop sign. That, to me, with that extraordinary sightlines that you have now, I think that would at least be a yield sign, but it sounds like you're going to make it a two-lane right-hand turn.
Well, the left is going to be a two-lane.
And right is going to be a single lane?
The right is going to be a single lane. Operationally, again, the way we work this out, that's all that'll be needed.
Will there be a ramp? I mean, it seems to me curious as to why that's a, it looks like that should just be a yield sign, and it's a stop sign, which creates additional backup that probably could be avoided. I mean, it's a terrific sightline to the left there to take that right turn on a yield sign, but right now, it's a stop sign, so. And I think a lot of people, unfortunately, are treating it as a yield sign, because it is so wide open, and people are going to get stuck at tickets for that, and that's unfortunate.
I'd like to make a comment following up on that. We had, at Exit 4, we had a similar configuration, where you had a lane going left at a light, and then a right turn with a stop sign. And one of our state reps challenged it, and turned out it was illegal to have a stop sign there. So, I don't know if this, maybe this is a different configuration, but to me, it seems the same. So, putting a stop sign there, what happens is, is people look left as they're towing, and they go through the stop sign, and then, you know, police officer will stay there and look for the people who do that. Turns out, it's really designed to be a yield, so you may want to look at that.
Yeah, we can discuss it with our traffic bureau. Our traffic bureau is integral in reviewing these intersection plans and with respect to signing and payment margins and all that stuff, so we can review that with them. But I can tell you that operationally, again, you know, I mean, it's all, you know, our queue lengths, you know, there is enough room to store traffic, you know, for the condition zone, which is stop condition, so.
Thank you.
So, to kind of continue a little bit, and Yannis kind of explained a little bit more here before we started talking more about the raised island. We are realigning Independence across from Verani Way and making some improvements there. It'll be a two-way, obviously, a two-way layout. There's a left and right turn coming up to Auburn in that direction, and then a single lane coming out through. And then Liberty Drive is going to have two lanes out as well, a right and a left. And minor improvements at Perkins Road, just to tie in the approach. This plan's a little bit deceiving, because it does show, you know, the ramps that we previously constructed here, all in yellow, and basically, the yellow means just pavement work in order to match in at either end. You know, there's some adjustments to the pavement and pavement overlays needed. One of the comments that I just heard earlier was the extremely long off-ramp, and it is longer now than it will be once we get this done, because what will happen is, because the widening is of the main line is to the west, some of the future widening will, it was all planned as such, so that the future widening is going to eat up some of that extra width, extra length that's there now, and it'll actually be, become, you know, ultimately, the ramp will be a little bit shorter than it is now. The next thing I wanted to move on to is traffic control and construction. As Pete noted, this contract is going to advertise this fall for construction, construction beginning next spring. The way we're approaching the reconstruction of this is, we're going to construct half of the, we're going to construct half of the southbound roadway on I-93 Main Line at one time. So, the first thing that's going to happen is, we're going to, the southbound traffic is going to be, is going to pretty much remain in its existing configuration, and we're going to construct half of the new roadway on the west side in order for us to move traffic, the existing traffic, onto that part. And then, that'll be the first construction season, is primarily just that, and then this, which will be 2011. And then, proceeding into 2012, we're going to construct the other half of the roadway and bridges along I-93 Southbound. And then, once that's complete, we're actually going to move the main line traffic, the northbound traffic, onto the same roadway and bridge. So, in other words, we're going to have both barrels of traffic, northbound and southbound, going over what is this ultimate pavement width here, in order for us to reconstruct this northbound barrel outside of traffic altogether. So, what will happen is, there's going to be a crossover for this traffic out in here. These, it's not shown on these plans, but, so we're going to cross the northbound traffic over onto southbound. There'll be a median barrier separation between both barrels, northbound and southbound, and then continue, and then they'll come back over onto northbound in this area here, so we didn't construct this entire northbound outside of traffic. And that'll be, that'll be occurring in 2013. And when we, once we've shifted traffic off of this northbound barrel, and after the second year of construction, and we can remove the existing bridge here, then the Route 28 work can start. And the Route 28 work is going to take, is going to be the 2013 construction season and may run into the completion, to the completion of the project in the spring of 2014, probably. And that'll be phased construction. In other words, we're going to keep traffic pretty much existing configuration, build half of the new roadway to the north. And it varies depending on where you are, but essentially, that's the theory is, or that's the way the plans are laid out, is phased construction. Keep traffic to one side, build another half, build the opposite half of the roadway, then put traffic on that, and then reconstruct the remainder of the roadway. So, to recap here, the main line construction, this bridge and roadway, because we're doing it in phases, will take 2011, 2013. And then, the 2014 construction season, we're going to be reconstructing the main line northbound and as well as the Route 28 work.
Eleven and 12 on the southbound, and northbound will be 2013.
Right. Is that what I said? No? Okay. Sorry. That's all I have.
Any questions on this project before we go on to the other ones? I know there's probably a million things going through people's heads. Yannis?
Going back to the intersection.
Why don't you take the microphone so people can hear you?
Going back to the intersection of Auburn and Rockingham Road, it might not be fair to you right now, Pete, but if you decide to leave the island like it is right now, because it was compromised between the town staff and their businesses, when town staff wanted to close it, and the state had to find some kind of compromise to, and they left this kind of design. Now, in the future, if you find out that you have to close, can you give some assurances that that improvements later on will be done only financed by the state? It's not going to be two-thirds or one-third later on, like we have projects that, you know, improvements between the town road intersection and an estate? Because right now, this is 100% financed by, it's no funds from the town. Later on, it might be that because of intersection with the town road and estate, we will have to contribute, you know, one-third to these improvements.
Yeah, the improvements, if we were to change that, that would be state, that would be all state.
Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot, but this is one of the concerns.
That's what's been, what we've discussed over the last few years, so.
Okay. That's a good question, Yannis, thank you. Yes?
I have the, kind of a political question for you, and that is, what is the latest you've heard or aware of that talks to the funding between Exit 3 and Exit 5? And what do you, I mean, if you can say, you know, what pending discussions are there, or what are the options that maybe are being discussed?
There's a legislative committee, HB2 Commission, that's working on funding a study, you know, studying ways to improve the funding for transportation in all of New Hampshire. And one of the focuses of this is funding for I-93. So, I know that there's a report that's due in the near term, coming out of this commission, and I guess, I'm not quite sure what's going to be in it, but I think that there are going to be alternatives for finding the revenues necessary to fund the entire I-93 improvement projects from Salem to Manchester. I mean, that's one of the priorities of the 10-year plan. I-93 completed the entire 20-mile stretch, so I guess I feel fairly confident that, and that's my job, is to complete the entire project, so that's why I feel confident that the money's going to become available. And what form that that will become available, I guess I don't know. I'm awaiting.
Appreciate.
Okay. Okay.
Reed's trying to ask a question.
Reed, are you trying to ask a question?
Well, if it's not, if it's only between you and them, and the public's not invited, I'm not going to ask for it. Otherwise...
I'll, if there's consensus at the board.
Sure.
I see, yes, you may ask a question.
Okay. How do I say this? To persons who are in their lower 80s, and who are having worrisomes about going between Exit 5 and Exit 3, speeding in two lanes, and I'm curious, you can't even give a rough estimate as to whether I'll be underground or overground when the thing is completed? It was started too far back. I've nearly spent the money that I was paid, it goes right through my property. I've nearly spent the money that they paid me for it, so that, and yet, nothing has, no bridges have been fixed or anything.
I think you and I have had a few discussions over the, over the last couple of years.
Yes, exactly.
And that's good to put a face with a name.
I'm sorry I didn't shave. But every year, it's something new that is in the way, whether it's the turtles or the eagles and everything. I'm not, I'm kind of very serious, even though I'm trying to do it in a lightweight. Is there really a chance that it'll get done?
I feel strongly that it's going to get done, and our completion date is 2020 for the entire quarter. And that the way we focused our schedule is to advance the work that we have funding for, and that when funding becomes available for the remaining portions, that they will come in order that we had planned. And so that there's some time before the projects that are between Exit 3 and Exit 5 and north of Exit 5 to, for them to start in the 2014, 2015 timeframe, and then be completed in a five-year period. That's the planned proposal.
2015 is seven. I may get to 90. Try and do it before I'm 90.
We'll do our best.
I'll be calling you again.
I look forward to our conversations.
I just have one more question regarding the Exit 5 area. You mentioned the rail, the recreational trail. I know our, on the dairy trailways, the local organization, and they're currently seeking funding to complete or to continue the trail up through this area. Have they been in touch with you, or have you been in touch with them? It just seems like if they're going to pave part of the trail, there might be economies of scale that, you know, the same contractor may be involved, or...
We've had a number of conversations with the Trails Group. Initially, there was very little planned work for improvements to the rec trail beyond what we had disturbed as part of the bridge projects from the ramp projects itself. They came to us, they asked if there was anything that we could do to make improvements to a greater length of the trail. We basically said that we would look to see what we could include from an improvement standpoint within the right-of-way that we had available. We went back, we did some engineering, and we extended the trail itself, the footprint of the work, through, you know, to the west. So, we've extended it, we've made it more uniform, it crosses, maybe Dan can show...
Yeah, let me just kind of highlight that for a little bit. Yeah, we've graded out an area here along the, I guess it would be the west side of Independence here, out through here, and you can kind of see, it's this brown, this brown line here that kind of parallels along our proposed improvements, and then it just ties into the informal trail that's there today. And the same thing along Verani Way here, recognizing that, you know, Verani Way driveway is down through there. There was a little bit of space that we felt we could grade, again, grade out an area for trail users to use along the side of Verani Way within our right-of-way. So, that's what this brown line is, and it extends up to some point in here, again, beyond the piece that this property owner owns, back onto the existing trail that's there today.
So, we did make some improvements and additions to the project where we could.
Thank you. Yes, Mike?
Yeah, I wasn't going to ask this, but seeing how it kind of, the discussion broadened into the 10-year plan and the fact that you guys still believe that 2020 could be the fruition of the whole thing, and you mentioned from 3 to 5. Is Exit 4 a in the 10-year plan or not? You don't have to answer that if it's uncomfortable to answer.
I think, from a construction effort, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, right, thank you.
All right, if you could continue.
We may come back to this, there's an agreement that we have been coordinating with town staff after South Road, that I'd like to come back to this plan.
Okay, sure.
So, the next project here is the South Road mitigation site. And basically, this is, this aerial shows the, shows in broader terms the location of it. And this is I-93 here, and this is Exit 4 is... location of it, um, and, uh, this is I-93 here, and this is exit four is actually just, just off the map in this, in this location. Uh, off of exit four, down Route 102, Gilcrest Road, um, down, down Gil, Gilcrest Road, and then, uh, South Road is, is down in this area here, and our mitigation sites are, we call them the north site and the south site, it's comprised of two pieces. This project is really part of a, the, again, it's part of the I-93 mitigation package, and overall, we, we, the state had purchased, uh, about seventy-five acres in this area, uh, up, up and through here, uh, to keep as preservation land, and then about seven and a half acres is called what we call creation, uh, and, and habitat, uh, wildlife habitat, in this case, it's, it's turtle habitat, um, and, uh, basically, uh, that's, that's exactly what these sites are, is we're, we're, we're excavating material out of this, this, uh, this, this was a, um, a sand pit, if you will, where, where, where material was excavated years ago, out of this area through an access road, uh, off, off of Gilcrest, uh, it's about a half a mile length, length, I think, to get to it. And essentially, we're excavating material out of it, and we're creating, uh, sand, we're, 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 we're creating sand hills and, and water holes and, and, and that kind of, of thing for, again, turtle habitat. Um, and then the same thing, uh, for the site off of South Road, there's an existing access, uh, this is for the south side here, off of South Road, uh, same, same deal here is we're creating the same type of environment, uh, adjacent to this pond here, uh, for that purpose. And as part of that project, um, as Pete mentioned, we're including the, the culvert, uh, the town's culvert replacement project, which includes, uh, about eight hundred feet of, of roadway profile improvements, the profile is being a, raised a little bit to accommodate a, I believe it's a, it's an, it's a, an eight foot wide by four and a, or eight foot wide by four foot box, uh, actually, hold on.
I wish it was eighteen inches of four foot opening.
Yeah, it's, it's eight by four, opening, of opening that's left, because we are putting, as Yanis pointed out, eighteen inches of gravels in the bottom for, for natural effect. Um, so, I, I, oh, and, and as far as construction of this, um, the construction of these sites are going to occur simultaneously with, with the exit five work. Uh, one of the reasons why we're, we're advertising these two contracts as, as one project, or these two projects as one contract, uh, is for the use of the, of, of the materials. There is quite a bit of material that's being excavated out of these sites, and we're going to use, we're going to use that material to, uh, to construct the I-93 improvements here, here at exit five. So, uh, as far as timing goes, it'll be within, within the same timeframe that, that we talked about, that this is going to be occurring. The culvert replacement work, uh, we had, in previous discussions with, with the town, we, we, we agreed that, uh, the best solution would be to close the road, so it looks like with a two week road closure, uh, we can, we can replace, uh, the culvert and do the road work. Uh, so we do have, um, we, we do have a detour plan, um, that, that shows, do, do you want to go through that?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think from a timing on the, um, on the, uh, the culvert work also, we want to front load it in the contract, so it gets done the first construction season, so that's the plan. We know that you, there's, um, uh, regular flooding problems at this location, and, and we, we were asked to, to front load the, the culvert work and improvement effort to mitigate for that, so.
Did you have a comment?
If you, if you want, I can say it right now, or if you didn't finish before you go to the detour, uh, I want to express my gratitude to the state for incorporating our design that we had already for many years to fix the section of this road. As to your question, yes, the road will be raised up. We had replacement pipes put over there in our design, and I knew that state many years before, that the state was planning to do their credit crossing over there, so I waited patiently, so it will be on day down, day, day down. They, they are paying hundred percent for replacing of this culvert, so it'll be one of the major drainage problem in time will be solved, and again, they incorporated eight hundred feet of, uh, road to be reconstructed for the approach for this culvert. So, thank you very much for, for doing this.
Okay.
Culvert itself provides wildlife connectivity between the two north site and the south site, so that's, that's how, um, it was included in this project.
Don't take my drawings away, money from our budget.
That was my next question.
Many more problems than I am to face.
Okay, questions on the South Road project from the council?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you both for coming and bringing these, uh, renderings with you, that were very helpful. Uh, question though, uh, maybe for you, Yanis, do you have copies of these electronically, these renderings?
No, no, I have, uh, copies of the South Road plan in details, whatever will be done over there, but no.
What I would suggest is if we could get from the state, the electronic files of this, so we can put them up on our website, so our folks, our town folks could at their leisure go to our website and look at these plans, that would be very helpful.
Certainly. Um, we will be producing, um, fact sheets, um, for, uh, these projects also, so that we can provide, um, additional information, but that, that's, um, we will do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the South Road site? Mike, Sean? Um, did you say, so South Road will be closed for about two weeks?
Yeah, and-
So, I assume that there would be, you know, detours to use Kendall Pond or alternatives, because that is, uh, wait, I live on the south side of town, and I never go to exit four on 102 if I could avoid it, so I'll just prepare accordingly.
Yeah, I can, I can, we'll, we'll turn over the plan here, but essentially, that's exactly what it is, we're going to have signs, we're, we're going to have signage, a signing package for this, and essentially, it is going out to Kendall Pond Road, to, to, out to 128, and then, and then back around 102, so, uh, I don't know if we need to go through the plan, do you?
No, we brought the plan with us.
Just in general, you, you don't need to go through the details now.
Yeah.
And, and the other question was, is, are those two sites, are they near where we, we had the dumping issue in the past, Yanis?
That was one of the areas that we blocked, and I worked with that, with the embankment.
Yeah, I believe it's right here at, at the entrance of the site.
Yeah, which is work, perfectly.
And then also, the state's planning to close, you're planning for the gate here on Gilcrest, who has, in the future, so we don't have a similar situation-
Okay.
-on that road.
Now, the, to, when you excavate the material out of there, uh, are the trucks on the top one there, are they going to come out through that dirt road onto Gilcrest?
Yes.
So, there'll be some kind of control point there, so we know, okay?
That's correct. Yeah, we're going to have to make some minor improvements to that road, a little bit of tree clearing and whatnot, take, take it in there-
Get the vehicles out.
-because it hasn't been used by, by trucks in, in a while, it looks like, so.
Where's the entrance to that? Just out of curiosity.
By the pond, by the river.
It's, it's right down, what's, what's the name?
The bridge, right, right north of the bridge.
Yeah, the, the bridge is here, the entrance is up here.
Charleston, just south of Charleston.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, yep, yep. It's been a while, yeah.
So, we're, we're proposing, uh, gates at the beginning of that road, and also at the end of the road, and, and the area's going to be fenced off, so, um, ultimately, the, um, the gate at the front end will, um, will stop people from actually going down the road itself, and there'll be another gate, um, entering into, uh, the mitigation area, um, with a, with a fenced in area also.
Is that road, uh, state, is it a state road, is it a class whatever road, or?
No, it's owned by conservation.
Yeah, it's, it's owned by the town, um, and we've, uh, there are, there are, we have rights from a, from a construction easement standpoint, in order to, um, utilize the road to construct the mitigation site.
Okay.
And then we would restore it, um, you know, there's going to be, try to minimize the amount of work that's done to that road, there are going to have to be pull offs constructed so that trucks can, can pass, um, and some minor improvements from a grading standpoint, which we would leave, we propose to leave in place.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this? No, okay. All right, you had a third?
Um, yeah, the only, um, we continue to coordinate with the, with town staff, um, we do have, um, a couple of agreements that we're looking to, um, execute with, with the town. Um, one of them is, uh, basically acknowledgement of, of, for controlled work zone within the exit five area and the South Road area, from a traffic control standpoint, that through the active, uh, work zone, that, um, that there is some work on town roads that we'd be doing, and that we would, we would, um, look to get authority to, uh, control traffic, utilizing, um, uh, means to, to that end, either whether it be flaggers or, or, or officers in vehicles. So, um, that's, uh, one agreement, and, and included with that is, um, just acknowledgement that the, the work on South Road, the culvert replacement, and, um, the, the road work would be completed with state funds, no town funds, so that, that's kind of intertwined in the agreement itself. The, uh, the second agreement, um, involves, uh, winter maintenance of sidewalks. Um, there's sidewalks that line 28 that are proposed, paved sidewalks, and, um, this agreement basically, um, has the town acknowledging the fact that, that, um, once, um, the sidewalks are completed, um, and the project is complete, that the, that the maintenance, the winter maintenance of those sidewalks would be the responsibility, um, of the town. And, um, so that would be a second agreement, um, that we would, uh, again, we're, we're coordinating with, uh, with town staff on that, and we look to execute that agreement also.
Okay, so I assume we'll see a, uh, summary or proposal from you at some point?
Uh, yes, because it's nothing tonight, but obviously, we have a, quite a big discussion about it.
Okay.
How much, just out of curiosity, how much sidewalk are we talking, guessing, ballpark?
Oh, as far as the distance standpoint, well, pretty much the, there are, throughout the, the, the entire length of, uh, pretty much the, the entire length of the improvements, i- in other words, starting from Sims Drive, where, 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 where pretty much, uh, constructing the sidewalk, um, on, on the Wesley side, all the way down to Liberty Drive, and, and again, the same thing on the opposing side, all the way to where it meets to the improvements that were done with the parking right, because the parking right constructed the sidewalk up to the, the gas station, Tadashi Foods.
Close to two miles in length, um, total.
That's a lot of sidewalk.
I'll, I'll just say that we'll probably be having a spirited discussion when that comes before us.
How about doing it with, uh, grass? It's cheap, it's easy to mow.
Any, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much, uh, tonight was a long meeting, I appreciate your, uh, your waiting for your turn, and, uh, this was very helpful.
We appreciate the opportunity to come, also, and-
So, the exit five information to the folks at the O.T., have some feedback to give them on the exit five, and you can do that offline, you're able to-
Yeah, certainly.
Does it hopefully have no sidewalks?
Three C's a sidewalk.
Yeah, certainly, Chris, I invite you to talk to them on their way out, and it's a good card or something.
Yeah.
Okay, um, that was the conclusion of new business, uh, moving on to approval of minutes, we have our minutes of the council's public meeting of, uh, September 20th, 2010.
Motion for approval as, um, presented in our packet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
For the appointments and approval of the-
No, on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, and I had no corrections. So, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of, uh, council's public meeting of September 20th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative, and the minutes are approved as presented in the packet. Moving on to other business, liaison reports, John?
Um, I had no meetings since our last meeting.
Okay. Uh, the only thing I did was, I went to the, uh, Manchester Airport Authority, uh, and I saw, uh, and actually Dave was there, as well as, as Andre, and, uh, saw their presentation on the master plan, it was quite informative, so.
Cool. Uh, traffic safety met today, uh, we discussed a number of things. One of the things we discussed, um, was down at, uh, Dave, can I go into that a little bit?
Sure.
Yeah, we discussed, uh, Kendallwood Estates down behind Crossroads, uh, which is Boulder Drive, Sandstone Circle, and a couple of the roads, and, uh, there's been, I guess, a parking issue in the town roads. So, uh, we were discussing as a board what we should be, uh, what we should be doing, especially coming close to the winter months, and the problems they have with plowing and, and getting fire apparatus down Sandstone Circle. To make a long story short, uh, it was agreed that it's now in the police department's hand, they're going to, uh, do what they do to, um, try to get the residents to comply with the, with the laws about no parking there, and have them park in their designated zones, and, um, if that doesn't work and they don't comply willingly, then they'll start doing the enforcement part of it. So, because they, because we haven't really done anything with it for such a long time, um, they felt like going to the rest, you know, going that route would probably be the best way to do it, and, uh, that was what was discussed tonight.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is they'll, they'll have a period of time where they'll give the people a chance to, uh-
Yes.
-correct the issue before they start, uh-
That's exact, exactly what the plan will be.
Okay, because as long as I've lived here, it seems like there's always been-
Right. But it has, it's, it's gotten worse, and there's been a lot more issues with it, so.
I don't know what else they're going to do, they've issued, there's only two parking spots per unit, and there's no visitors parking. They've already issued stickers for assigned spots, so I guess they got to change the behavior.
Well, it, it's that, John, and the other part of the problem that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, was they were having issues with residents not paying, uh, condo fees, so by not parking in their designated spots, there, there was something to do with that, I didn't get the gist of that.
Some internal issues there that are dragging the town into it with their parking behavior, so.
Yeah, so, um-
Okay.
The police department and the fire department both concur that it's probably the right thing to do to try to get it, try, try to deal with it now rather than later.
I actually own, my, my family owns one of the units down there, you may want to let them know that there is a homeowners' association meeting at the end of October in the library, I don't remember the date, but there's one coming up at the end of October in the library.
Yeah.
So, um, and then, I mean, I can tell you get the letters, there's a new management company, so, maybe, maybe if you bring it to their board.
I think this is where the impetus came from, right? Is the new management company?
The board.
Yeah, it's a new management company out of Haverhill, the, you know, I don't even remember the name of the old management company.
Can you pass that along to, uh-
I will.
-the chief, Hart, Chief Hart?
I'll see, you know what, let me, um, I may have a letter at home or something, I'll see if I can find a date.
Okay. Any other, any other liaison?
I'll head.
Tom, any liaison reports?
Did attend a co- conservation commission meeting, uh, they spent quite a bit of time talking about maintenance of the, um, musquash, and, uh, altering some of the trails, and, uh, maintaining the trails, so quite a bit of discussion, uh, around that, and it's good to see that, given the fact that we've had, had quite a bit of discussion about, um, maintaining or, or, or the maintenance function of our open space activity, so that seems like they're, they're moving forward with, with some of those tasks, or continuing to do some of those tasks, uh, in conjunction with the trails, uh, folks and others that are interested in helping, so that's a good thing. Other, I, I briefly attended the school district meeting, not, not as a, as it was a liaison assignment, just because I was curious, and they were spending quite a bit of time going, I guess they're going through a re-accreditation process, and it, uh, it sounds like it's quite an involved process, and, well, power to them, it's a lot of work, so, but I didn't stay very long, but I did, uh, I was curious about that.
Okay, Mike?
I'll sit, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one other thing, there is a library trustees meeting this coming Wednesday, which, uh, I am, uh, planning on attending as well, so, and I'm putting that in my calendar right now, so I don't forget. Okay, uh, so that was liaison reports, uh, town manager report.
Yeah, uh, three things, uh, we've begun the process of compiling the draft FY-12 budget, uh, pursuant to the council's directive of a few months ago, to, uh, target a level tax rate from FY-11, uh, by adding on the FY-12 mandatory cost, and some other cost drivers we'll know will come upon us. Uh, it looks like to reach that goal, we'll have to reduce the budget request and the operating budget by about 1.050 million dollars. Um, so, uh, department heads met last Thursday to begin that process, and, uh, I'll have their budget recommendations to me by October 12th, and, uh, which, which segues into the second, uh, point I have, is, uh, please review your upcoming meeting schedule, because it is now peppered with budget workshops, we're getting into that season, and, uh, the budget presentation will be at your second regular scheduled meeting in November, on the fifteenth, however, we do have an all day budget workshop scheduled on Saturday, the twentieth, being at eight AM, in which all the budget, all the department heads will be here, uh, to review the budget request and, uh, and, uh, answer any questions the council and the budget committee may have. Uh, last item is, uh, Northwest Fire Station, uh, progress is continuing, and, uh, the, uh, the general contractor hopes the- hopes to reach substantial completion by the end of this month, about three weeks, so, which is really good news, they've been aggressive in their schedule, and so it appears that hopefully we'll have the department in and settled prior to the onset of winter.
Excellent.
Dave, question regarding Litchfield Road, is that still blocked at this point, or is it?
Yeah, Litchfield Road is still closed, you'll notice that obviously the lights have been completed at Litchfield and Mammoth. I've not been up north into town since late last week. At that point, there's a shortage of traffic paint nationwide, and that's the only holdup to putting down the traffic lines over on 28, and as soon as they do that, they'll have the signals flashing for a week, then they'll have them programmed ready to go.
Traffic paint?
Right, yeah, it's a different kind of paint, and they've had a shortage of it.
Because of stimulus.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman, going back to what Dave had mentioned about our budget goal, it's something that we, that we came up with early in this town council's administration, in the late March, early April time period, and I think it's important that we maintain our consensus on the importance of this goal and send a feedback to the town manager and certainly to the town department heads that this is a serious issue that we're, we want to reinforce with the town staff, that that goal has to be maintained.
Absolutely, I agree.
So I just wanted to, I don't, I'm not going to make a motion or anything, I just wanted to put that on the table and make sure that we give clear feedback to the town manager to keep moving forward against that goal.
Thank you, Dave, for following through with our goal.
Yeah, appreciate that, Dave.
Okay, well, at this point, I think everyone's kind of nodding their heads in agreement with you, Tom, so that's still our goal. Also, to kind of expand on what Dave said, so besides, we also have meetings, which I also believe are budget workshops, on the 22nd and the 29th.
That's correct.
Those are both Monday nights, so I believe every Monday night except for the second Monday night, the eighth is.
Happy Thanksgiving.
So plan on, your Monday nights will be here in town hall, pretty busy that month, including that Saturday, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept the consolidated motion on the appointments?
I will, however, I do want one modification, number six, it said to appoint Jeff Locke and Tim McKinney. We haven't had the chance to talk to Mr. McKinney yet, so I'd like to hold off on that number six until.
Do a separate one for Jeff?
Or do we want to wait for the?
There's two spots.
Yes, two spots.
There's two spots, we interviewed Jeff tonight.
So we could, we could certainly.
Motion needs to reflect the, Kenny out of the motion.
The motion should, exactly like Mike just said.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we accept the appointments and reappointments of the following people to the following committees for the following terms. John Michaels to the Fundary International Exchange Committee for three years, expiring on 12/31/13. Reappointment of Dwayne Himes, a full member of the SWAC, three-year term to expire on 12/31/13, as a solid waste committee. Reappointment of Martin Surges as an alternate member, the solid waste committee, one-year term, expire on 12/21/11. Reappointment of Lynn Wiles and Chris Davies as full members of the planning board, three-year terms, expiring on 12/31/13. Reappointment of Dana Coombs as an alternate planning board, three-year, right, three-year term on 12/31/13. An appointment of Jeff Locke as an at-large representative to the open space task force, which is an ad hoc position. Reappointment of Ben Parker as an alternative member of the rec commission, one-year term, expiring on 12/31/11. Reappointment of Mike Boyle as a full member of the rec commission, three-year term, expiring on 12/31/13. The reappointment of Patty Hanley as a full member of the rec commission, three-year term, to expire on 12/31/10.
No, 13.
13.
12/31/13, rest. And a reappointment of Art Rugg as a full member of the heritage commission, three-year term, expiring on 12/31/13.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? None, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, abstentions, and the chair votes affirmative, all of those positions mentioned, 1.50.
Chairman, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I have, if you will, entertain one other item of very quick business?
Certainly.
I'll hold the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to see if the council would consider asking the town manager to look at the newly passed House Bill 1267, which is, recently came out about background checks for hawkers and peddlers with the, I've had a lot of folks who are concerned about people, strangers knocking on their doors, who are basically door-to-door salespeople, and concern for safety and so forth. And what this law provides is we could impose if we wanted to, for these folks to have background checks, if they're going to sell in our community. On the surface, it sounds like a great idea, but I think that before we do anything, I would want to ask the town manager to tell us the pros and cons of enacting a local ordinance around this issue, and come back to us at a later date with some information on this new law. It's a recently passed law, it's in this publication that we all get.
So that has been passed by the House, and if I understand you, you're saying we just asked Dave to go and?
The House, by passing that law, they've given the towns authority to impose background checks on hawkers and peddlers.
Limit their abilities.
And I guess what I'm asking is the town manager to come back and advise us what the pros and cons of imposing that in Fundary would be.
Yeah, we already have a process. We had that discussion, there were a number of different times where residents were getting people coming to the doors, that they had no idea who they were, and it kind of does throw the fear at people, you know, because they don't know really who these people are.
We will follow up on that, Tom, but just so you know, we have a current ordinance in place. One of the requirements for these hawk and peddlers, they have to secure a state license first. So citizens should either A, ask to see the state license, or B, if they don't have one or if they feel uncomfortable, call the police department, the police department will check on their credentials.
Yep.
What we're finding is a majority of people who go door-to-door in the community do not have their state license. And if they don't, they have to cease and desist that activity until they do obtain a state license.
It's my understanding also that a violation of the local ordinance on that is now going to be a misdemeanor, class B misdemeanor.
Okay, I'm not familiar with that, but we'll look at that as well.
So is the council agree?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, so Dave, all right, any other business before we accept the motion to adjourn?
I'll refer my motion.
A second?
Motion to adjourn, second. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, abstentions, the chair votes affirmative, and we are adjourned.